Man is kind of chilling to lose.
Sorry, I always wear a jacket.
Yeah.
So do you say we're moving it? We're gonna move it with this. So like all of sections one, two, and three get moved with it?
Council is seven o'clock and this is July third, twenty twenty four. I call this meeting to order. Will everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance? Okay, up next we have roll call. Ms. Ariel.
All councilors present, a quorum has been declared.
Okay. All right, up next we have the agenda approval, but we are going to move item number four under city manager legal discussion on direction of electrical services at Saint Benedict to another meeting. So we'll, we'll adjust the agenda for that after we get a motion.
We're waiting for some information from Excel as well as Heather isn't here tonight. So both of those things want to kick it down to a different meeting.
Okay, thank you, sir. Councilor Yan V. Hill.
Mayor, I move that we approve the agenda, taking out city manager legal A discussion on direction of electrical service at Saint Benedict for a future meeting.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Not? Please start voting. Okay, Ms. Ariel.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Up next on the agenda, we have a citizen comment. This is the segment of the agenda to where any audience members who have filled out their comment cards, we will call you up to the podium for you to make your comments. We do ask that you keep your comments to within three minutes. There will be a clock on the screen to let you know when those three minutes are up. If you're still talking at the three minute mark, I will politely ask you to end your comments at that time. Ms. Ariel, I don't have any comment cards here for the audience, so can you give the instructions for the people who are on Zoom how to be recognized so we can give them the opportunity to speak?
If you're on the Zoom app and you'd like to speak for audience comment, you can use the raise your hand feature in the bottom of your screen, or if you are on the telephone, you can dial star nine and it'll raise your hand as well. Mayor, there are no hands, groups.
I don't see any hands raised either, so we'll go ahead and close this segment of the agenda and we'll move on down to ceremonial items. I believe Captain Spangler can show on up, okay?
Good evening, council. Good evening, mayor. I'm here tonight to recognize one of our officers for his hard work and dedication becoming a drug recognition expert, also known as a DRE. Recently, Officer Aziz was nominated and awarded the DRE of the Year for Rural Areas by MAD and CDOT. Just a little bit of background on what a DRE is. DRE is an expert in recognizing impairment by both alcohol and drugs. So just to put it in perspective, a law enforcement officer just graduating the police academy, they could determine if somebody is under the influence, where a DRE could come in and tell you exactly what substance that person is under. With that being said, becoming a DRE is one of the most complex trainings in law enforcement because they have to understand the effects of every substance that that might be out there. It is a coveted program where they vet interested applicants followed by an interview panel. Once approved, they attend a three-phase program where each phase they have to pass with a one hundred percent. Officer Aziz completed his training in January of twenty twenty three and he became one of approximately a hundred and seventy-nine DREs in the state of Colorado, forty-nine of them belonging to the Colorado State Patrol. In January of twenty twenty-four, after Officer Aziz's first year as a, as a DRE, he was nominated as a DRE of the Year Rural. An award that recognizes DREs across the state for their impact on the communities they serve. Officer Aziz assisted surrounding communities with DRE evaluations, teaches classes on impaired driving to the police academy as well as other agencies, and he recently started teaching a live at twenty-five program to the youth in our community. In May of twenty twenty-four, Officer Aziz was awarded the prestigious DRE of the Year Rural Award for his contributions. I'd like to take this opportunity to congratulate and thank Officer Aziz for everything he has done for our department as well as the community.
Hey, Officer Aziz, would you like to say a few words?
I'm good, mayor, thanks.
Okay, so we have some council members who would like to make some comments, okay? We'll start off with Councilor Hensley, followed by Councilor V. Hill and then Councilor Carson.
I just want to say thank you so much. Thanks for doing the extra, taking that on. It's so important to our community. And also something I'm sure you're proud of too, in the sense of being recognized. I'm sure you didn't do it for the recognition, but it's always nice to feel that, but I just want to thank you so much for what you do for our community.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Hensley. Councilor Dominguez?
Congratulations on your success in this endeavor. It seems like it's very complicated to identify all these different aspects of identifying these drugs. So congratulations. I'm glad to have you on the team.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I was gonna say the same thing. Congrats. It sounds like tough work to pull hundreds on one test is tough, much less multiple. So good work. It sounds like a really tough endeavor and thank you. Thank you for the work and the dedication. It's tough out there right now, so.
Thank you.
Okay, I will wrap things up since I don't see any other lights on. Can you just share with us what inspired you to apply and go in this direction?
So it started with Detective Lopez. I call him the man, the myth and legend as he's been doing DUIs for longer than I have. He inspired me to keep pursuing the impairment world. But what I'm passionate about now is that I have five kids and when I stop people that are impaired, I think of other childrens and teenagers that are going home and I'm just saving lives that those kids could go back home to their parents and that's what inspired me to keep continuing the success.
That is awesome. That is awesome. Well, thank you. The work you do is important and we appreciate everything you do and congratulations. Wish you much success.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Good job. Okay, council. The next item on the agenda is consent calendar A, Councilor Yan V. Hill.
Mayor, I move that we approve consent calendar A.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, please start voting. Ms. Ariel.
The motion carried unanimously.
All right, thank you. Okay, up next we have on the agenda advisory board appointments.
Council applications were received from citizens wishing to be appointed to the planning commission, library board, and the homeless coalition. Those applicants were interviewed on May twenty-second and July third. Those applicants are Kelly Adams, who is applying for the housing representative seat on the homeless coalition, Jan Owen, who is applying for the library board, and Ralph Simbley, who is applying for the at-large position on the planning commission. Mr. Simbley currently serves on the planning commission as the alternative. The other two applicants are new applicants. The homeless coalition has four positions available with terms expiring June first of twenty twenty-five. The library board has one position available with a term expiring June first, twenty twenty-eight, and the planning commission has one position available, which is the at-large seat with a term expiring June first of twenty twenty-nine. Ballots have been prepared for you to cast your votes for each board with an option to appoint or an option to continue recruitment.
Okay, so what we'll do is we'll pass them down to you. I think you have them all and we'll wait until you tally them up.
Council has voted to appoint Kelly Adams to the homeless coalition as the housing representative with a term expiring June first of twenty twenty-five. Council has voted to appoint Ralph Simbley to the planning commission as the at-large position. Term expires June first of twenty twenty-nine. Council has voted to appoint Jen Owen to the library board. And the term expires June first of twenty twenty.
Okay, thank you. So Councilor V. Hill?
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve Jan Owen to the library board, Ralph Simbley to the planning commission, and Kelly Adams to the homeless coalition.
Second up.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Not? Please start voting.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you, council. That brings us to the next item on the agenda, under Public Works, first reading of ordinance number thirteen, twenty twenty-four, amending the pedestrian safety zone to include Highway two eighty-five between Main Street and Seventh Street.
Thank you, mayor. As you will recall, back in twenty twenty-two, council established pedestrian safety zone between Denver Avenue and roughly where the one-way pairs come back together near Richardson Avenue as a zone in which fines would be doubled for ensuring or trying to ensure safer pedestrian and downtown access in that downtown corridor. The issue that this ordinance is intended to address is that travelers coming into Alamosa on West Avenue, which is Highway two eighty-five from the south currently don't receive any indication that Sixth Street and Main Street are in a pedestrian safety zone, so that they'll come up on two eighty-five and either turn right on Sixth to go east or go up and turn left on Main to go west, and there's no indication that they're in a pedestrian safety zone. So we want to sign that and CDOT will not allow us to put signs for that pedestrian safety zone outside of the safety zone. So if we want to sign two eighty-five to alert people that they're entering this pedestrian safety zone, we need to expand the zone along two eighty-five far enough south to be able to get that sign in a useful place and in consultation with Harry, primarily, we've determined that if we expand it down on West Avenue or Highway two eighty-five down to Seventh Street so that it runs on two eighty-five from Seventh Street north to Main Street, that will give us sufficient room A to put the sign in and B to deal with getting traffic slowed in that area, which has also seen some increased development along Highway two eighty-five in that area. So that's the purpose of the ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Spiezer? Councilor Jackie V. Hill, you have your mic on, of course. Councilor Yan Yan V. Hill?
Mayor, this is pretty cut and dry for me. I move that we approve ordinance number thirteen dash twenty twenty-four on first reading and set up for a public hearing on July seventeenth or soon thereafter.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Go ahead.
I just have a quick question. If we're going to do that knowing that the Boys and Girls Club and the Early Childhood Center are further down, do we want to extend it just a few blocks further? Because I know in the summertime, they walk across the street to go to the elementary school for lunches and breakfasts and such. And there's a little, and especially after school, there's a little bit of foot traffic as well. It's just, I was just wondering out loud if that discussion was how. And it's just a suggestion. I'm not stopping the thing or anything, but if that's something, uh-oh, I summoned a deacon.
I was gonna have to come up here anyway, so I figured I'd maybe answer the question behind the question. So when we first contacted CDOT, it took about two months to hear back to have some sort of actionable step to say that, yes, we would like to expand the safety area, make, you know, close this loophole. And so when they said, well, the first thing you have to do is change ordinances to increase the the safety area. What I would recommend is that we can still explore that if that's an option that you guys want to consider, but I would say we still keep moving this ball forward because it took us about three months to get us, get this much information, so.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Carson.
I was just gonna ask, what is the current speed limit on West moving up from the Boys and Girls Club? Is it twenty-five or thirty?
Twenty-five, I believe.
So is it? Chief Dingfelter might know better, but I think it's thirty or thirty-five even.
Right in front of the Boys and Girls Club is thirty-five? Okay. And it's not a big deal. I just want to know how how much it was gonna drop because it would drop that to twenty-five, right?
No, it doesn't change the speed limit. It just changes, it doubles the fines. That's all it does. The speed limit is set by.
Never mind. All right.
Because it's a state highway, the speed limit is set by CDOT.
Okay, that fixed my confusion then. All right, thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. All right, council, we got a motion. Have a second. Please start voting. Ms. Ariel?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to the next item on the agenda, the first reading of ordinance number fourteen dash twenty twenty-four and ordinance amending the requirements for when sidewalks are to be added or upgraded.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome.
So in two thousand and one, city council passed an ordinance that, pretty simple, it says if you're doing a construction project on your house, whether it's a new build or it's an addition, you have to put sidewalks in. And if you don't have compliant sidewalks, so let's say you have like a two-foot wide sidewalk, it has to be the full ADA accessible sidewalk. That's great. That was almost a quarter century ago now. And so as you can imagine, construction costs have increased. And as we've dealt with this ordinance more and more, especially the building department, obviously, construction costs increase and there's more and more and more of these projects that get hit with this pretty sudden and pretty high cost where all of a sudden, you know, they're planning on doing an addition or something and then boom, they're hit with this pretty big curveball. And so that's kind of one aspect of this is, you know, maybe we should at least reevaluate where that threshold is. Another issue that we've had with the ordinance is written is that there's no arbitration process. There's no way to ask for any sort of relief from it. And so really, our response to citizens in the past is really their only recourse is to come to council and make a public comment. But then that leads to yet another sort of issue where council is put in the position of granting standardless variances essentially where they they make some sort of waiver, but it's just, there's no, there's no due process that's afforded. And so this would also provide some sort of a standard by which staff can evaluate the certain conditions and and then be able to grant, you know, you know, relief, you know, either partial or in full. So a partial circumstance, let's say you have a corner lot and one side doesn't make any sense to put a sidewalk, but maybe it is necessary. So then there's at least an opportunity for a homeowner or a property owner or developer to have that discussion and have a chance to at least make their case. And then on the the extended arm of that is if the decision for a variance is denied or, or, you know, isn't something that the property owner agrees with as far as it was interpreted incorrectly, then they would also be able to make an appeal to planning commission as far as, you know, that that was, that this section was improperly interpreted. So it gives people some relief and it gives everybody some clear guideline guidelines. The other thing that this ordinance would do is it would give us the ability to escrow certain sidewalk costs. So with the street trust fund is a great example where we know that there's gonna be certain construction projects coming and somebody may trigger a sidewalk upgrade, but it doesn't make sense to put in a sidewalk if it's gonna get ripped up. And so this would just be one example where, you know, maybe we would require the escrow instead. There's other examples where maybe it's a place where we'd like to put a sidewalk, but it doesn't quite make sense at this stage. Maybe we need a couple others to fill in. And so really, those are the four big components of this ordinance. So raising the threshold, adding some sort of variance process, adding a, an appeal process, and then authorizing staff to do some sort of escrow agreement. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Deacon. Okay, Councilor Carson, your mic is on.
I was just gonna make a motion.
Okay, okay, go ahead.
A quick question, Deacon. Raising the threshold from from eighty thousand to what?
So it currently is only twenty thousand, so we would be raising it to eighty thousand.
Okay, thank you.
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve the ordinance and set for a public hearing on July seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, seven P. M. or as soon thereafter as the matter may be heard.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, please start voting.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. That brings us to the next item on the agenda. Discussion on the sidewalk replacement fund policy. You, Mr. Harry?
Good evening, council. Mr. Mayor. So kind of just wanted to bring this back to council just to have a discussion a little bit about how the concrete replacement program has evolved over the last year. If you recall, last fall, we brought to you the idea of bringing the concrete replacement program, but at least the work to be done in-house. So we're able to get that moving forward. We have the crew in place. But what, how do, how do, how do we want to utilize the funds? So we have a hundred thousand dollars basically through the street trust fund identified for just the concrete replacement work. But then we have all these tripping hazards. So, you know, over the next five years, the plan is to kind of systematically go through the city and start replacing those, those identified hazards. But we still wanted to offer the replacement program in some capacity, allowing homeowners, you know, who have, you know, tripping hazards themselves or just the sidewalk is broke down and just needs to replace, have some placeholder and the ability for them to work through Public Works to have that replaced. So what we've done is the policy that we wrote, we basically set aside twenty-five thousand dollars for that homeowners, for homeowners to have that ability to come in and fill out an application. We do expect them to have their own contractor and they have to kind of do the bulk of the work, but it at least gives them a mechanism to utilize the funds and, you know, replace areas that is in need. The way we kind of broke it down is we looked at, you know, residential neighborhoods, most of them are replacing one or two stones. They're not doing a lot of work. So we did a cap at one thousand per applicant unless it's a corner lot, then it'd give them two thousand dollars. So if they were trying to fix sidewalk on both sides of the lot, it gives them a little bit more funds to work with. If there's an ADA ramp, the city would actually do seventeen hundred dollars because those get pretty expensive. So we kind of broke it down in that manner. And then at the end of the year, if there's anything left over, that funds would be available fifty-fifty for really the program Deacon was talking about infill or those who triggered that concrete replacement program or concrete infill through, you know, pulling a building permit or, you know, remodeling. So we think it's it's a good balance, at least going into the first year. We think we're a little bit light. I think we could probably give them more, but we didn't want to get, we didn't want to throw thirty-five or forty-five thousand at it and not have enough to to meet our goal initially this year. So I think over the next few years, that twenty-five thousand might increase. We won't know until we get a few years under our belt. But I wanted to bring it to council, see if you had any input or direction or if you like the way we have it currently written.
Okay, I'll I'll turn it over to some of the council members to see if anyone would like to add any comments or say anything. Councilor Carson?
I had looked at this earlier and I think it works. I think it's a good, a good shift of that money. There's the fact that there's still a thousand dollars available per person is great, so I, I think you guys are moving in the right direction. We don't have to have any action on this, do we?
I don't think we do. It's just a discussion. Yeah. Councilor Krebs?
My only question here is the, the money allocated toward the tripping hazards. How do you, I'm seeing that there's hundreds of them. How do you determine who gets what first?
So the city is taking care of the tripping hazard. So we've kind of broke it up in quadrants. We're just gonna start working through quadrant one and on to two and three. If a homeowner has their own tripping hazard and they want to take care of it before we get to it, then it would just go through the normal replacement program.
And when should we start seeing tripping hazards getting taken care of?
So we're gonna start towards the end of next week, working in downtown, and then we'll start working to the south.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
The rapid flashing beacons took us a little longer than planned, so.
Okay, I don't see any other lights on, so I'll take it for a while.
Well, and and just to it.
There he is.
I'm sorry. I was gonna say just to address the question that was asked, does council need to do, take any action? Yes, what we would like is a motion from council for alternative, the recommended alternative, if you're good with that, which is to allocate seventy-five thousand toward fixing tripping hazards, twenty-five thousand for concrete replacement match, and any leftover toward infill projects.
Okay, we're gonna let Councilor Dominguez finish his comment and then we'll come back to that. Go ahead.
Thank you guys for working on this. This helps us explain to the community how this stuff works and the order needs to go in, so appreciate that.
Okay, Councilor Carson?
So moved.
Okay, so. Okay, so, um, we have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Well, I just want to add, thank you so very much for identifying, uh, those tripping hazards. I think that it goes a long way to protect the liability of the city as well as the people from getting harmed and injured, that's a great priority, so great job breaking everything down.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion, a second, no further discussion, please start voting. Okay?
The motion carried unanimously.
Awesome.
And then, a big thanks to Beata, she walked every, uh, block and, and mile of the city, identifying and taking pictures of it, so.
That is great. Tell her thank you, thank you. Okay, that brings us to the next item on the agenda, under police. Second reading and public hearing, ordinance number eleven, twenty twenty four. An ordinance authorizing the police chief to sign the San Luis Valley Drug Task Force M O U. Chief?
Uh, thank you, Mayor and Council.
Chief, your mic isn't on, can, there you go.
Oh, there we go.
There you go.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mayor and Council. So, this is the, um, second reading of the, uh, Drug Task Force that we're asking, um, you to approve, that will be part of, um, we talked a little bit about it last time. So, um, Montavista, Alamosa, Elmoseso, Rio Grande, and Canales County have, uh, full-time investigators, so they're going to join this, uh, joint task force to target, um, you know, our, our hardcore drug dealers and stuff, and it's been very successful. We've worked together a lot on a lot of this, and this here is just the, to finalize that so that it allows our officers, it's really kind of ran through the district attorney's office, uh, DA Kelly, when she, uh, took office, this was one of her primary goals, was to establish a drug task force. So, uh, myself and Lieutenant Michael Martinez, and Martin in, uh, Montavista helped her write the, uh, the task force agreement and, um, uh, we've used different, um, sources from around the state to, to do this, so we think it's a, a really good, um, a really good use of, of additional resources as we need them and stuff, so, uh, we would ask you to approve it.
Okay, thank you, uh, Chief. So, what we're gonna do is we're going to open up the public hearing for, uh, ordinance number eleven, twenty twenty four. An ordinance authorizing the police chief to sign the San Luis Valley Drug Task Force M O U. So, if we have anyone in the audience who would like to come up to the podium and make any comments in regards to this issue here in the public hearing, please do so at this time. Okay, I don't see anyone in the audience coming to the podium, so now we'll go to our Zoom participants. And Ms. Ariel, if you don't mind giving them instructions of how to raise their hand to be recognized.
If you were on the Zoom app and you'd like to speak for this public hearing, you can use the raise your hand feature in the bottom of your screen. Or if you are on the telephone, you can dial star nine and it'll raise your hand as well.
Okay, don't see any hands raised, so we'll go ahead and, um, close the public hearing and bring it back to council. We have Council Hensley, Council Carson.
I was just gonna move. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and move that we go ahead and accept ordinance number eleven dash twenty twenty four. Um, authorizing the police chief to sign the S L V Drug Task Force. I think anything we can do to help support getting drugs off the streets, so thank you.
I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, do we have any further discussion? Uh, Chief, I might add, I want to thank you so very much for the collaboration effort that you and the DA and the other community partners are, uh, implementing to bring this about because I really believe we have to be stronger on the drugs so we can cut down on the nonsense that keeps happening in the valley.
I agree, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, if we can, um, have everyone start voting?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chief. The next item, we have the second reading and public hearing for ordinance number ten, twenty twenty four, adopting the twenty twenty four model traffic code. And ordinance for the regulation of traffic by the city of Alamosa, adopting by, adopting by reference the twenty twenty four edition of the model traffic code.
Thank you, Mayor, as we discussed when this matter came before council on first reading, the Colorado Department of Transportation promulgates this model traffic code, which is intended to be uniform throughout the state and, and syncs up with the Colorado Title Forty-two, um, state regulations governing traffic. This is the model traffic code to be adopted by jurisdictions other than the state. When the city adopted this most recently, it made a number of fairly small changes to standard provisions in the code that were specific to Alamosa, particularly where you cannot ride bicycles on sidewalks, um, some, uh, speed limits within private parking lots, things like that. Those are all carried forward into this new twenty twenty four version of the model traffic code, which the Department of Transportation has released. The recommended, um, alternative is to adopt the ordinance as written, which carries all of those historical changes that we have always had through. You could, if you wanted, make other changes, uh, that we have not done in the past. Uh, I don't have any, that we, the staff has not thought of any that we would present to you. Uh, but those, those are on the table, anything you, you can think of that you want to tailor specifically to Alamosa, we can do through this ordinance.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Suiso. So, at this time, we're gonna go ahead and open up the public hearing for ordinance number ten, twenty twenty four, adopting the twenty twenty four model traffic code and ordinance for the regulation of traffic by the city of Alamosa, adopting by reference the twenty twenty four edition of the model traffic code with certain deletions and additions and repelling all ordinances in conflict therewith. We have anyone in the audience who would like to come up to the podium to make any comments in this public hearing? Please feel free to do so at this time. Okay, I don't see anyone in the audience coming up to the podium, we'll go ahead and go to the Zoom participants. If you don't mind, one more time, Ms. Ariel, explain how to raise their hand.
If you're on the Zoom app and you'd like to speak for this public hearing, you can use the raise your hand feature on the bottom of your screen. Or if you are on the telephone, you can dial star nine and it'll raise your hand as well.
Okay, I don't see any hands raised, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to council. I see Councilor V Hill, uh, Jan V Hill has his light on.
Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number ten dash twenty twenty four.
A second. We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? If not, please start voting.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Council. That brings us to the next item on the agenda, under City Clerk Municipal Court. Resolution number eight, twenty twenty four, updating the fine schedule for ordinance violations in municipal court.
Thank you, Mayor, there's nothing in particular that triggered this review, but, uh, the police chief, the judge, uh, the city clerk and I have decided it was time to just go through our fine schedule, take a look at whether we were comfortable, um, with what was in there. One of the things that, um, we wanted to particularly take a look at is, um, you'll note called out in the council communication, setting up escalating fines for muffler violations, we've had a lot of complaints about noises, uh, traffic, loud traffic engines in, in the city. Um, setting a violation for, uh, introducing a new set fine for violation of licensing secondhand dealers, I don't think we do much of that. I'm looking at, uh, our finance director, but we don't, we don't do very much of that, but we don't currently have a set fine for that, it seems a simple thing that we should have a set fine for. We want to, or proposing to increase fines for failure to bait a nuisance first offense from one hundred dollars to five hundred dollars. We do see a lot of citations coming through municipal court for people failing to evade a nuisance. And I do want to point out that by the time a citation gets resh- issued, uh, the community service officers have had a number of interactions with the property owner before it gets to that point to try to address, uh, nuisance violations, primarily weeds and trash and rubbish. Uh, and this would make, I think, a little bit more teeth to that. Similarly, uh, increase the second offense from two hundred dollars to a thousand dollar fine, uh, so that people will take this seriously. Um, and then just put our Jake Brake fine in line with the state model traffic code, Jake Brake fine. That's pretty much the highlights. So, council adopts the fine and fee schedule by resolution, and that's what this proposed resolution number eight will do.
Okay, thank you, I'll bring it back to council, uh, Councilor Carson?
Okay, so, I have issue with number five and six without some sort of a some, without some sort of a trigger in place, like how many warnings do they get? Because, you know, I try to keep my weeds clean, but I haven't been warned a lot. I mean, when Karen was, you know, in the code enforcement officer, she didn't mess around, so you know, you'd get on it pretty quick, but is there, is there a number, is there a set number already? Do you get three warnings, or is it just one warning and then they could stick you with this?
I would defer to Chief Dingfelder on that, but I, I, it's sort of officer discretion in what the police practice is. There is at least one warning.
At least one.
And also prior to, prior to the actions of a fine, so that, that's sort of a verbal warning. And then there's a written warning that says, look dude, you got ten days to take care of this. And that only after that isn't taken care of within that period would there be a ticket.
Okay, so there is a written warning after the verbal interactions?
Yeah, they, I, I mean, that's always our, um, our stance is to try and get compliance first and foremost, um, but, and, and like Eric said, by the time you get to a ticket, you've probably earned it.
The, the ordinance itself, the ordinance on nuisance violations itself requires that written uh, notice with a cure period that is a, at least ten days.
Okay, cool, thank you.
All right, so, um, thank you, Chief. So, Council Krebs?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Um, I just want to thank another collaborative effort for all of this. I think it adds a little bit of backbone and it's a, it's a good start to making some of our rules a little bit stronger here in the community to show that we are serious about, um, some of these nuisances, so I just want to say thank you. My only question would be, um, if we were to, to go through with the vote, when would this take place and what kind of, um, warning, not warning, information, education would you give the community to let them know that these are increasing?
Well, it, it's written to take fa- play, or to take effect immediately upon its signature. So, it would take effect right now. I personally hadn't thought through any kind of public information, I don't, I mean, I would wager that fewer than five percent of the citizens of Alamosa even know that we have a, an adopted set fine fee schedule. The, uh, jurisdiction of the municipal court for assessing fines ranges from zero to, I forget the number now, it's north of two thousand three hundred dollars. So, for all, I think, intents and purposes, there really isn't an, an expectation on the part of the community about what kind of fine they might be looking at.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I don't see any other mics, um. Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we, um, accept or we approve resolution two dash tw- uh, resolution eight dash twenty twenty four, updating the fine schedule for ordinance violations in municipal court.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Um, Chief, I just want to say thank you and, and Eric for, for looking into all of this because these are genuine complaints and, uh, comments that we receive from the, uh, citizens in the community. This is a way of letting them know that we are listening to them and we're also following up and following through. So, thank you so very much for this. Okay, please start voting.
Could I make one comment, Mayor, after?
Sure, go ahead.
I mean, my, we're fine to vote, I just want to make a comment, uh, my comment is, um, like I said, I, I do pretty good to keep my weeds down, I, I, and I'm, I'm doing really good now, actually. But, um, with that and with us going to this level to ding people, I think we need to make sure our properties are clean and kept well too, because I've seen a couple properties of the city that I think were a little bit out of control. And they might be railroad properties, so I'm not sure for sure, so it could be some of that stuff along the railroad. But, I think we just, you know, what's good for one is good for all, but, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Council Carson. Okay?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you and thank you, Council. All right, Council, tonight we have a little u- unique twist to our, um, meeting. We're gonna go into an executive session and I'll have our attorney confirm that I'm doing this right. And then, after we, usually, we don't conduct any business after an executive session, but this time we are and we'll come back. So, right now, do you need us to make a motion to go into executive session? Uh, Mr. Suiso?
Yes, and the reason we're doing it this way is that the executive session will address some issues that need to be acted on tonight. Uh, and so, we'll, we need to come back so that you can act on that. Just for the public's awareness, I don't expect this to be a long executive session, I don't think it'll go more than fifteen or twenty minutes.
Okay, all right, thank you. Council Jan V Hill?
Mayor, I move that we move into executive session pursuant to C R S twenty-four dash six dash four oh two to receive advice from the city attorney concerning amending the city's opioid litigation to include claims against pharmacy benefit managers' express scripts and Optum R X.
And Councilor V Hill, that would be four oh two sub four sub B.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Okay, please start voting.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay. Staff, we will be back shortly.
I was thinking about that.
Okay, council, um thank you for um that executive session. Uh let's go ahead and move on down to um regular business, uh continue. Uh amend opiate litigation to include claims against uh pharmacy benefit managers, express scripts, and Optum RX. Um councillor Jackie V Hill?
Oh. Sorry.
Okay. All right, councillor Jan V Hill?
Eric, are we able to go right right into it?
Yeah, well, certainly. I mean, there's a fairly extensive novice background. So if you have any questions after reviewing that, we can talk about it, but otherwise you can make a motion.
Yep. So I'll move that we amend the opioid litigation to include claims against pharmacy benefit managers, express scripts, and Optum RX.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, please start voting. Ms. Ariel?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to the next item on the agenda. Committee reports. Do we have anyone with any committee reports? Councillor Jackie V Hill?
Um so we had the homeless coalition on June twenty fifth, and they gave reports on Horizon Heights. And they said that they had um a website that they were working on, and they'll be taking applications fairly soon. And um she said that they are gonna have the sidewalk in probably end of July, but for sure by August fifteen um for Century Mobile Home Park. Um they're still working on cleaning up the trash there. So they're going row by row and they're setting up a trash bin at each row. And she said that was going pretty good. She said all the sewers are fixed. Um. So they they have a problem with cats there. They said there's over three hundred cats roaming around at Century Mobile. So they're um they're dealing with that. Um. So they're for void school. Um they put a P F yeah, or RFP out for two architectural firms. Um. They were asking for a youth representative also for the housing coalition. Let's see. And they talked, they had a discussion on Saint Benedict's for that US Supreme Court decision. Um they talked about La Puente, that there um they just had a family of ten that they were able to house um find housing for. And she said that they are now using cot nights. So they have a couple of cu- cots, you know, that people could use for short term. Um. Food Bank is almost done. It would it should be opening in August. Um. Um they didn't have a quorum for the coalition this last time, so I think they were this guy that Kelly is gonna be on the coalition now. And then they talked about having library outreach education. So right now, they're doing um a reading program at Sapata Park. So I think it ends. It started um sometime in June and ends July eighteenth, and it's from nine to twelve thirty. And I think they feed these children and everything that go to that reading program. So I think that's about it.
Thank you, uh councillor Jackie V Hill. V Hill, that's a very thorough report. Thank you so very much. Any other councillor Krebs?
Thank you, Mayor. I have two. Um the library board met briefly a couple of weeks ago just to finalize the updating of some of their policies, um bring them more up to speed, more into the um the twenty twenties, if you will. So very excited to see those roll out. Um and maybe walking around Summerfest, you might have seen a booth for the Creative Arts District. And they are very excited. They've been working really hard al- for almost a year now and in just another couple of months um to pull together all the different art areas that exist here in Alamosa from theater to music to painting, just everything, anything you can think of. And part of their excitement is because they have um formed together to actually make application to the state and say we want to be named from the state level, a creative arts district. But the first step in that is A choosing a name and getting the word out to the public. So they decided to combine the two. And so you'll be seeing them out and about, and they'll want your input on what you think that their name might be. It'll still it'll still come out of Alamosa Creative Arts District underneath. But they're trying to work on something catchy to be able to take the ball and run with it and and plan some great things for the future of the arts in Alamosa. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, that brings us to um staff announcements.
So I just wanted to let council know that we're wrapping up the Washington Avenue rebuild. Uh we got a few days left. And then after we open it up, which the ribbon cutting will be July tenth, ten AM. And invite everybody out for that, of course. But after after a few weeks, we'll come in and and do the painting, let the oil kind of burn off a little bit so the paint here is better. Our next plan is going to be to doing the overlay or plant mix silk coat, and that's kind of in the same area. We're gonna be doing West Seventh from uh Washington West and the cul-de-sacs that tied into that. So here in the probably the next month, we'll be all wrapped up with the construction season, um or at least the roadwork. Uh you will see quite a bit of activity coming up in the next uh three weeks on it from Excel Energy. They'll be on Second Street as they'll be relocating the gas lines and the power poles for next year's roadwork. So it's all here.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that update.
Yeah, it um I I think it's important to give you guys a little bit of an update. Um you know, we've had some uh really serious uh crimes that have occurred here in the last couple of weeks. So it's kind of will give you like four major cases that we've been working. First is the State Street um shooting that um a house was shot up. I think we're comfortable saying that we we believe that was that house was not the intended um. But you know, we're still working through that and stuff. So and we've got a lot of evidence that's being processed at CBI. We're just waiting on the results of that. And as you know, CBI is the only lab really in the state. So they get tons and tons of uh evidence. So we're just waiting on that. The Cole Park stabbing during the um during the carnival that was outside the carnival after hours. Um we've uh we've identified everybody in that and we've sent charges to the district attorney for uh filing of charges on that. Um the Denver Avenue shooting, um we're still working on that. We we don't have a lot of information on that. We have received some video that uh the detectives are going through to try and identify a subject uh or a suspect in that one. Uh the victim is uh still at a front range hospital being treated. Um but it looks like he's gonna survive. So that's that's good news. And then the Sunset Inn shooting, um a a lot going on there. Um they've we pretty much had to pull every detective, as you as you guys know, for all of these. A- and in fact, I actually pulled uh Molly Heaney and uh Officer Heaney out of patrol and put her into investigations to give them some relief and to help them like work through some of these cases. And we're just gonna have to suck it up on the patrol side for a little bit, um because the investigations division definitely needs a lot of help um with everything that's going on, um plus still trying to work drugs. So when we get this, um hopefully with the drug task force, we can um I think we have a meeting coming up on that where we can maybe start leveraging some of those other agencies to come help us do some of this drug stuff. So but we're gonna have a meeting on that next week, a strategy meeting on really attacking some of these more serious criminals and stuff like that. Um but the Sunset Inn shooting, uh as you know, we had a very intensive manhunt on that. Um uh we were able to get a lot of resources in here pretty quickly that afternoon, you know, CBI, uh the US Marshals, um plus all the agencies in the valley. Within within hours, we had eighty officers on scene, which is, you know, unheard of to do that. But uh you know, kudos to all the other agencies as they always do. You get something serious like that, everybody just shows up, whether they were asked or not. Uh Canales County Sheriff, Under Sheriff, uh you know, all the agencies that showed up, Montavista, everybody just showed up and helped. So we we definitely couldn't have done it without them. And uh uh thank goodness, we had a successful resolution, at least getting him into custody and getting him out of the community and uh um where he needs to be. Just everything now, they're just working through all the evidence and and cl- continuing to collect um evidence on that. And uh so that's really where we're at on that. I mean, there's a lot of things, obviously, I can't talk about. Um I can't make public at this point, but um but yeah, just thought it was important to give you guys an update on that. So but I'm happy to answer any questions that I can.
Thank you, chief. Um we'll start off with uh councillor Dominguez, then councillor uh Jackie V Hill, then councillor Carson.
Um thank you, chief. I know you guys have been pressed pretty good. Um um the collaboration is awesome, how slick it all unfolded is all your agencies pulled together to handle this. I'm appreciate your hard work and dedication. I'm sure there was long nights um and mornings and days. So tell everybody that we really appreciate the work to keep this place safe. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Dominguez. Councillor Jackie V Hill?
Um I just wanted to know, how are the other two victims in that shooting?
Um o- one, um the coroner will announce this on Friday, but uh another one of the victims did um pass away yesterday. Um but the coroner is the one that's gonna make the announcement on that.
Okay, councillor Carson?
Uh chief, uh I just want to say thank you um the hell of a month to come in, you know what I mean? Uh so sorry for that. Uh but thank you for your hard work. I got some really solid and good comments about you and and the team and the and the department and everybody involved um all week long. So um just thank you and and stay safe. It's it's crazy out there. So just be safe.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks again.
Thank you. Councillor uh Jan V Hill?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Just reiterate what everybody said. Thank you for all your work and collaboration with all this stuff. I guess this is kind of unusual for Alamosa. I I haven't been here like some of you all for so long, but it's it's been crazy the last month. And and can you comment a little bit on is this normal? Is this just the summertime people acting weird? And or is there is there a bigger picture that we're not seeing that we have to address? Should we is there stuff that we can do to to help?
You know, so a great question. Um we we were actually um talking about this today um i- in the squad room about um and and you know, everybody that's been here, I've this is my second month um being here, but I've lived here a long time. Um a- and it does seem very unusual um to have that amount of violence in such a short period of time. Um that isn't the norm. I mean, there's, you know, there's there's always something going on, um you know, with the criminals and stuff. But um to have that serious of violence go on in that such a shorts uh short period of time does seem uh pretty unusual. You know, they uh a lot of the officers that have been here, they talked back in twenty twenty um was uh was kind of a a violent year um as well. You know, there was the um a whole mess down in Lasalle's, but that a lot of that uh worked around here. Um you know, and and if like I I've tried explaining, it doesn't make it, it doesn't make it any better and stuff. But you know, at least two of these crimes, the um the Cole Park stabbing and the Sunset Inn. Um now, I would say everybody has some connections to Alamosa, but they weren't necessarily from Alamosa. Um so I I think, you know, unfortunately, Alamosa would be in the hub of the hub of the valley. Everybody comes here for for whatever, um you know, um. So I don't know, we've but next week, we're gonna have um uh I've got the captains, the detectives, and all the sergeants, and we're gonna have a strategy meeting on on going forward on really targeting, again, some of these hardcore criminals and and some of this violent crime.
Okay, all right. I um don't see any other lights on, so I'll go ahead and just wrap things up. Uh chief, thank you very from very much. Uh last month was a very busy month, unfortunately. Uh it's good to know that the bad actors are are not really from Alamosa. Um it's unfortunate that they do have some connections here, though. But there were people who did come up to me and let me know that you and your team put them at ease when they caught the uh fugitive. And just thank you so very much for everything you and your team do for our community.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. All righty, that any other staff announcements before we go to council comment? Okay, next on the agenda, council comment. Councillor Liz Hensley?
So first, I would like to welcome Rachel back. It's great to have you. So thank you. And number two, I would like to wi- wish Chief Dingfelder a happy birthday. I know I'm gonna pay for that later, aren't I?
Yeah, why don't we? Let's go ahead. All right. Since he says he doesn't have birthdays, you know, we're gonna do what we have to do now. So let's do it. Turn on your mics. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear chief. Happy birthday to you. All righty, thank you. Thank you, councillor Hensley. All right. Uh any other uh council comments? Councillor Jan V Hill?
Yeah, just uh happy Fourth of July to everybody. Have a great day tomorrow. Be safe. And go America.
Go America. Hey, I I don't see any other lights on, so I'll just wrap things up. Rachel, uh welcome back. We're really glad to see you. And Deacon was talking about how happy he was gonna be when you came back. Rachel, uh, welcome back. We're really glad to see you. And Deacon was talking about how happy he was gonna be when you came back, when he and I went on our trip. Uh, so thank you so very much. And I also want to, uh, send a special thank you out to, uh, Deacon and Harry. Last week, we went to, um, where was that place? Oh yeah, Montrose, uh, and, and to give a presentation for DOLA funding and Deacon and Harry did a wonderful job. Uh, we, we made it there. Um, and, uh, it was a long trip back, but it was a good, 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 good time. Deacon really stepped up and, uh, made a great presentation for our city. Very proud of him. So thank you. And then I'll fin- finish up everything. Um, I'll tell you all the rest of the story later about Harry and, and his heroic efforts uh, on that trip. We'll talk about that at another time. Um, and happy Fourth of July to everybody. With that being said, this meeting is adjourned.